Let's call to order the January 14th meeting of the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District. Before we do anything, there are some additions and some modifications to make to the posted agenda. I would entertain a motion to modify the agenda as following. To add as agenda item number four, a discussion and action around a Good Neighbor Grant. Add a presentation of the Alternative Energy Development Group after the finance report. Substitute the policies report, because there was no policy committee, exchange that for an SVSU report. And those are the proposed changes. So I would entertain a motion to make those changes, please.
So moved.
Okay, we'll call it Tony and we'll call it Dick. Any discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of modifying the agenda as noted, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. So happens. All right. So the first agenda item is the Pledge of Allegiance, which I understand is going to be led by a Shasbury student. Mr. Johnson, do you want to make an introduction, please?
I would love to. So we have Damian Christmas is a sixth grader here at Shasbury Elementary, who has graciously agreed to lead us in the pledge for tonight.
Very good. Yeah, come to the microphone.
Right here.
Yep, yep. Ready? Get the way we ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you, Damian. Thank you. Second agenda item, we open up the floor for public comments. Seeing none, we'll move to an approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda was posted, but just of note, we have a fifth grade teacher from Benell taking the leave of absence. We have three retirements and we have a resignation from a teacher who's moving to a different state to teach.
So moved.
Very good. We have first and a second.
Richard has a question.
Yes, Richard.
A couple of amendments to the January 7th meeting, which is the Mr. Renee Doosco's post reading. Page one, line 47, on the position to develop as a master's debt nine, which is not quite nine. Page two, line 42, this is fiscal year 21, not fiscal year 21-5. And page 20, page three, line 27, the last, the 23,000, which is the last part of that paragraph, the 23,000, it's for the summer program transportation with close to increased participation.
Very good. So with those corrections to the minutes noted, does the motion still stand as made?
Yes.
Thank you. And the second as well? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. So just want to say thank you to teachers Karen Aiken, Pam Goodhue, and Carol Stare for their service and enjoy retirement. So moving on to our next agenda item that brings us to the Good Neighbor Grants, and I don't know if Director Gordon or Chayla want to speak directly to this, but I'll open the floor to either one of you, please.
I open, I open to Chayla.
Okay, very good.
State form provides a Good Neighbor Grant for employees that volunteer 40 hours or more to an organization. And with my volunteering at Molly Stark over the past year with President PTG and so forth and so on, I was well over 40 hours, so I put in for the grant and they provided Molly Stark $500.
Okay, very good. So we need to accept that. So I would entertain a motion to accept the Good Neighbor Grant, please. So moved. Thank you, Dick. And thank you, Angie, with first and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the Good Neighbor Grant, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And the motion passes. So, Chayla, thanks for donating that time and thanks for looking into that grant. That's wonderful. Thank you for that. The treasurer's report was posted. Any questions or comments to be made on that? Okay, hearing none. Taken under advisement. So now, we return the floor over to William King, who is here with us from the Alternative Energy Development Group.
Thank you.
Some handouts. And so just to give a little bit of background, in the waning days prior to the merger, the BSD was approached by a group who was erecting solar panels in Vermont and wanted to have the BSD enter into a net metering arrangements. The BSD did not do that for a number of reasons, but one of the biggest being, we were all about to merge and we did not think it would be prudent to enter into a multi-year contract with an entity when the BSD would be going away. Flash forward to now, maybe a month or so ago, I was contacted by some folks at Bennington College. There was an opportunity for Bennington College to take advantage of a net metering agreement, and that did not happen for a few reasons, and so they were sort of looking for organizations that could take that on. And that's what led Mr. King and I to having some discussions. So with that bit of introduction, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chris. For reference, so Bennington actually is a customer of ours for three net metering projects. They are able to benefit from them. I have other projects that we're developing where Holly from Bennington was kind enough to make the introduction, to see if there might be something with the school board. What is your suggestion? I'll try to be quick, because I'm respectful of everybody's time. We can breeze through the first slide, which are just a little bit about us. Alternative Energy Development Group, we develop and then finance, own and operate commercial renewable energy projects. I live and work out of Vermont and handle our New England activities for us, which is a lot of Vermont projects, Massachusetts, a little bit New York and Maine. We've done approximately 25 or so projects here in Vermont with customers, and by customer, I mean what I'm here to talk to you all about, where they're benefiting from the net metering credits and saving money every year. So we call those folks the offtaker, who's getting the net metering credits. The state of Vermont, we have several projects where they're the offtaker. The city of St. Albans, St. Albans Cooperative Creamery, Bennington College, Twin Craft Skin Care. We just actually signed the Harvard Union Unified School District. They're going to benefit from a project that's being constructed right now, should finish up in the next month or so. So that's just a little bit about sort of who we are. The next slide is just a pretty visual of a project that we built last year in St. Albans. This project actually benefits the city of St. Albans. The sort of meat and potatoes we go on the next slide in numbers, apologize in advance for all the numbers, but we can distill them pretty quick. You're probably familiar with the last conversation you had. Solar in Vermont gets a certain value per kilowatt hour. And so as an offtaker, you would see the net metering credits on your bill, so you'd get a reduction in your GMP bills, and then we would, for lack of a better term, be a second utility who can sell you those credits at a discount. So we looked at all your bills across all the schools. I think you spend around $180,000 is what Chris and I determined. One of these projects makes approximately $140,000 worth of net metering credits, and by one of these projects, I mean, you're limited to a certain size here in Vermont. You can do what's called a 500 KW. That's the cap. You all would be in a position to benefit from all the credits from a 500 KW. So you'd, in easy numbers, you'd see about $140,000 worth of credits on your bill from GMP, but you'd get a corresponding invoice from me for those credits for about $130,000, and your net savings would be about $10,000 in year one. So that your savings discount is sort of a floating credit with the rate. So as rates go up, and GMP went up 5% the last two years, and I think has three 2.92% rate increases coming. So as the value of the credit becomes more, your savings become more, but you always save that seven, eight percent. That's kind of the way the program works. There is nothing cited on the facility, on the buildings, or on your grounds. The project I was thinking of is a project we have that's permitted. It's in St. Albans. The power's just fed to the grid, and then through metering, GMP knows, okay, we put this many credits. We line up the appropriate amount of credits for each school so that they can fully benefit. It is a long-term agreement. These are typically a 20-year land lease with the landowner for the site and a corresponding 20-year agreement for someone to be the offtaker. They are assignable. So for example, Bennington College, those three projects were first slated to a place called the Hermitage Club. I didn't really think Hermitage would last 20 years, but I didn't think it would go there quite as quick. But because it's assignable, you can assign these to any Green Mountain Power user. We were able to take, okay, Hermitage is no longer viable entity, and shift all that savings over to Bennington College. And that's really the suggestion.
Did you say there was a site we would be off the, if we were to go into the agreement, you would be off to St. Albans, or we would be doing a site down here somewhere?
The project that I had in mind was in St. Albans, just because that's what we have that's permitted. For this year, I have a site in Brandon, Concord, and St. Albans. We're finishing up a project in Wilmington right now, but Mad River Ski Resort and Mahoron supermarkets are technically the offtakers for that. There is a project in Sudbury that we're finishing up that we're in discussions with a number of people, but if this was something that was of interest and you all wanted to see an agreement, there's a possibility you could be part of that project. The benefit there is that things that got done last year, the value per kilowatt hour of the power's a little bit higher, so the savings would be potentially more.
So from my view, not only is this an opportunity to save the taxpayers' money, but it's also, it's a responsible move to move into renewable energy for our schools. So I, when we saw this opportunity, I thought we should definitely take it to at least hear what Mr. King had to say. I would recommend that we take this under advisement and maybe at our next school board meeting, move into executive session and have a frank conversation about this. But in the meantime, I think if we can, if folks have specific questions after looking over this material, forward those questions to me, and I can feed them to Mr. King, and we can see if this is a thing we need to, we want to take advantage of. What's your timeline?
The project, probably, given the weather, May-June, we would start construction. So in a perfect world, you like to have the offtaker all set up before you start spending millions of dollars on construction. So that would be the hope, to have something in May or so.
What's the acreage or square footage necessary for a 500 KW?
Inside the fenced-in areas, about two and a half acres. It used to be a little bit larger, but the modules, so the footprint of each module is about six by four. In 2014 and 15, you were able to get about 310 watts out of that six by four. Now it's 390. So you're able to condense it, condense it down.
What size is this one that you gave us?
That is a 500.
Okay.
So it's 500 KW AC, which is the inverters, what generates the AC power that you can use. The panels themselves, the DC solar's about 735. You want to oversize the DC, not to get too technical.
Because there's loss in the conversion?
Yeah, you want to oversize it a little bit, so you drive the inverters, what they call the inverter load ratio. You push them a little bit harder and it makes them more efficient.
Any other questions from Mr. King right now?
Is there any expectation that that percentage savings changes with any upgrades or any other thing that does apply?
At the moment, no. Just in the, it would probably be a year. The hope would be when these go through their, call it 20, 25-year cycle, you're able to put exactly that, put a facelift on them of, okay, the new modules that are out there, you can get more power out of the same footprint. You have the permit, you have the land lease, and at that time, there'd be a new land lease negotiated and a new net metering agreement negotiated, but don't foresee that happening before 15, 20 years.
Is there generation loss as these age, and does that affect the contract rate sign?
So there is, and that's, you can see there, it says the panel output D-rate. It's about half a percent a year. It's not nearly that linear. It's not a nice even half a percent. The panels are all rated to be at 80% or greater of their original efficiency after 20 years. They've got that warranty. So what we tend to see is you see a little bit of a sharp drop-off, and then it kind of levels off and stabilizes. The nice thing with these agreements is you're never going to get billed, you're in the money first, so to speak. So you see the credit on your GMP bill. Any invoice you receive for us would be directly related to that credit and a discount off of that. So if this, if, you know, we're, let it slack and it doesn't produce energy, you're not saving any money, but you're not making any payments either. So there's not a risk of paying more than you're going to save money.
So we are committing essentially to your, we would be committing to your company to pay for the electrical output of those panels over the course of the next, well, you have a year, 25 years, but say it's 20 years. You're, you, so it's not a lease, and we don't own the panels. So the maintenance and upkeep of those is your, and so I have 18 panels on my workshop. I benefit when I get the snow off of them. How does that, I mean, obviously you want to get as much out of it as you can, but we're only paying for what's produced. So in a heavy snow year, and you're not getting panels off two and a half acres, then we won't, we wouldn't see the same benefit?
We, you wouldn't, it's kind of a, you see most of the benefit, about 75% in May through October. This time of year, as you just said, you could honestly put a blanket over these things in January, and it wouldn't affect the total amount that you got over the course of a year. We don't, we do, we're responsible for all the O&amp;M, the razor tax at the state and municipal level, so they will generate a little bit of revenue for whatever town they're in, and at the state level, if they're not making a lot in the winter, you're just not seeing a lot of savings on your GMP bill. And it, we try, we take that.
But we would see a large, just to be clear for the group, we would see a large credit in the summer, when lights aren't on, kids aren't here.
That is a good point, that it would be, there'd be a cash flow management thing that you would want to think about, because you would be banking, most likely banking credits in the summer months that you would then use more in the fall and winter months when the light, you know, the lights were on and the students were all here. Correct. But we don't typically knock the snow off. Like you said, it's two and a half acres. Not really a good way to do it where you're not risking doing more damage than good. So we just, in our modeling, we do a certain soil calculation, meaning we figure half the time in January, they're going to be covered in snow, maybe 25%. We carry those numbers throughout the course of a year.
Yeah, please.
You said it's a $10,000 savings per year?
In year one.
Yeah. Is that for all of our, I mean, not $10,000, as a total of all of our buildings in the inner?
That would be a total across the, there's $140,000 worth of net metering credits. I think we looked at Palno, it was about $51,000, and then there was.
I remember a hint, but yeah.
So, yes.
So from Palno to Woodford to?
Yes.
Pennsylottis.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, of course.
And certainly happy to provide references of folks that we've done, I mean, you know Bennington, but anybody else that you'd want to see.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions for Mr. King? Okay, thank you for your time. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Appreciate it very much. Thank you.
This is Rick. No. Yeah, okay. So moving on, so the next item on the agenda is item number seven, which is a method of election for district moderator, clerk, and treasurer. So Superintendent Culkin, can you speak to that? This is a Director Gordon question.
Director Gordon has been dealing with the town clerk on this, yeah.
So as you recall, at our organizational meeting last year, we elected the clerk, the moderator, and the treasurer from the floor. Because we are now a large union elementary school district, I personally thought we might not have representation from every township at our floor meetings going forward, so it might be a consideration to actually put those positions on a ballot where they will be in every town. So those positions, people would have to pull petitions like board members do to get put on the ballot. So essentially, right now, this year, we will have to elect those positions again from the floor. If you thought it would be beneficial to elect them going forward from the ballot, we'd have to put an article on the ballot to move them to a ballot vote.
Okay.
So that's what we could add to the ballot this year.
So as it stands right now, at the 2020 town meeting, those rules would be elected from the floor, but also at 2020 town meeting, if we so choose, there would be a ballot item on the ballot whether or not to move these in the 2021 town meeting to have these elected by ballot.
Correct.
Okay.
And they're only one-year terms?
They are presently. Legal is actually looking into what a possible extension would be to a three-year term, because that is what MAU currently has for their moderator, clerk, and treasurer.
So we would assume that it could happen, but we don't have that back.
Yeah. Okay, so do you do, does that require, Director Gordon, does that require a motion from this body, a passed motion?
We would recommend that.
So in that case, I would entertain a motion to, do you have some wording you would recommend?
I would say just add, add an article to the upcoming warning, essentially, that we will basically ask the voters if they would like to elect their moderator, clerk, and treasurer by Australian ballot.
I would entertain a motion, does that affect, please? So moved. Thank you, Dick and Chayla. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is a report from the SVSU.
Well, I'll go with Chayla also on this, but SVSU struggled to put together a budget. I don't know that we've.
Well, no, we passed a budget. We, and then we, that's really what we did. And so now we're, now we're to the point where it needs to go back down to the districts and to make any adjustments, and then we will reconvene.
If needed.
If needed. Which is most likely needed. For further discussion.
Okay. Very good. Anything else to add from the SVSU? Great, thank you very much. Thanks to our reps for doing that work. Okay, next up on the agenda is a report from Mr. Johnson.
Once again, welcome to Shasbury. I know it's new to most of the board members here. Had a great time, great pleasure touring the school just before this meeting. I have several things on the report. First thing is pretty fun. It's the day before break on December 20th, we had a PBIS reward, which was taping yours truly to the wall of the cafeteria during lunch. So I spent about an hour and 15 minutes being taped to the wall, standing on a mat, and then the mat was pulled away at the last minute. I did, added a picture to the report for your pleasure. It was a great time. The kids basically brought tickets to lunch that they earned throughout the week, and one ticket got you one piece of tape, and they got to get by the mat and tape me up there. It was a good time. And then the school came back together at the end and watched me bust out at the very end. So it was fun, and the kids really enjoyed it. We are in the middle of our benchmarking window, so teachers are again assessing in math, English, language arts, writing, social-emotional behavior, and the data again will be used to compare to our fall data, and we'll be making some determination and tier instruction from there using our comprehensive multi-tiered system of supports, which we've done for several years now. Next Friday is an in-service day for all staff, pares and teachers alike, and we will be exploring our next steps in becoming a trauma-sensitive school, which is something the district and the school has been pursuing for at least two years now, if not longer. So we're looking forward for continued training in that area, and that's actually going to be training done by staff in the school that's had some trauma training. So we're doing in-house training with that. We are pleased to have Sheriff Deputy Dwight Franklin join us at Shasbury, our new SRO. He has been a wonderful addition. He's quickly getting to know the students, his staff, and the family. He's, makes us feel a little safer on campus. You could often see him in the gym playing dodgeball, as well as helping out in other areas, but no, he's been a wonderful addition. I want to thank the board for that. It's definitely made us feel a little more comfortable around here. Our pre-K visits have started, so it's been tradition at Shasbury Elementary that we don't do a summer kinder camp. We have pre-K visits in January and February on Monday mornings where children come, they're incoming kindergartners for the 2020 fall, and they come and they visit ma, or I'm sorry, music, PE, art, and library, and they have a little snack, and they come and they just kind of get to lay the land for a little bit. They also spend the last two weeks spending some time in the classrooms that they'll be in next year. So it just makes that transition in the fall a little bit easier, because they've seen the school, they've seen a lot of the school, and they've met a lot of the people they're going to see on a daily basis. And it's been pretty successful, and a lot of the parents come with them as well. So we, it's a good time. I host that, and it's a lot of fun. Speaking of dodgeball earlier, we had our first annual PTO family dodgeball night last Friday here at Shasbury in our gym. It was very well attended. We had close to 20 families. I think Scott was there.
My arm was sore for days.
It was parents against children. I was, I was a referee. It was actually a lot more fun. I wasn't dreading it, but it was actually, it was a really great time. You never know what's going to happen when you dodgeball, but the kids really got into it, and the parents really got into it.
Nobody messes with Mr. Johnson.
No, it was a great time. Actually, I had parents come in one day for all joining in, and they said, can we do that every Friday, Mr. Johnson? I don't think that's going to happen, but I think we'd definitely be doing it again. But I want to thank the PTO for organizing that. That was, that was a lot of fun. Couple of things I added to the report. We are pleased to announce that we will be working with the Hill for Literacy this spring with Diane Malkin. She's going to come here. Actually, we're having a meeting with her on Thursday, and she's going to meet with my K-1 reading instruction, instruction teachers and kind of look at our reading instruction, give us suggestions for improvement. And we're looking forward to that. I know Molly Stark and I think Benell have been working with her for the last couple of years. And I too want to thank Karen Aiken and Carol Stare for all their years of service. There are two staff that's retiring this year. Carol Stare has been a para here for 22 years, and Karen Aiken has been a teacher in the district for 17 years, so a lot of experience retiring this year. And they will really be missed, but I want to wish them all the best in retirement. And that's all I have for my report.
Great.
Thank you.
Any questions from the principal? Thank you very much. Thanks for having us tonight. So that brings us into the next agenda item, which is a review of the FY21 budget. So Director Gordon, chair is yours. Floor is yours.
What's another down?
What's coming around now is draft three.
Already looking better. Jeez.
Yeah. So from our last meeting and draft two.
What the heck did that happen?
We made serious cuts at that meeting.
We did. Holy crap.
Wow. I can come out of my house now.
We haven't gotten to the tax rate yet.
Yeah. Important, I mean, yes, so we've definitely made some progress in bringing these figures down. And what I've done, instead of going through a whole narrative again, at the bottom of the page, you have just kind of a synopsis of what the changes are from drafts one and two to the draft before you now. So just to quickly go through those, we removed all the requested positions and vacant positions that we had in the budget, except for one possible addition of a kindergarten. And we're not sure where that would go, but it's looking like the numbers might warrant an additional section of kindergarten next year.
That was the one that was, that you had listed for Molly?
Yes.
And there's still a para in there too, in the SU part, but.
Correct. Also, along with that, there were a series of requests for increased funding for building based planning. So those have been removed. There is still money in the budget, but it's just not the additional funding that was requested. So pretty much anything, you know, we went through this last time, anything that was an ask for this year, we essentially, for the most part, have pulled out. So those first two bullets are impacting categories one and two, so salaries and benefits are reductions there. The next bullet down, the requested additional slash supplemental funding for field trips, mainly nature's classroom, has been removed. So that was just shy of $16,000. It was, again, an add, so we haven't removed anything that was previously budgeted. This was an increase to the existing funding.
So that, so Shasbury and Woodford then?
Are still funded.
Still in it, but Bennington is?
Partially, partially.
Yeah, 25, right?
$25,000 split between the three buildings.
And then we do fundraising for the other half, right?
Correct. The next two bullets are related to operations. So I contacted all of our maintenance directors and went through the lists of projects that they had planned for next year, and we essentially pulled out everything that wasn't related to student safety or building occupancy, so namely, making sure that we start cycling through getting those tables switched out because they are a safety hazard presently, and then making sure that we're taking a look at the septic needs here at the school. As well as the, the reductions there, we've also suspended our contributions to reserve accounts for next year. So that was $130,000 that we've pulled out, so we will not have any funding, any additional funding going into reserve accounts from FY21. The next bullet down, there was a request from some schools to add transportation for summer programming. So again, because that was an add, it's not something that we currently provide, we removed that, and that was about $23,000. Unfortunately, Jerry's truck. Category eight in the equipment line, we have removed the $60,000 for the new truck and sander there.
Someday, Jerry. Someday.
And then a big change you'll see in budget category 10 is the assessment. So a couple of things happened here. Number one, I had my office go back through and take a look at the special education assessments, and there was a link that hadn't been updated, so that made a pretty significant change to the assessment to about a million dollars. So that was significant. We also received some information from the AOE about reimbursement rates, so we dialed that up a little bit to really kind of tighten, tighten it up somewhat. So those have impacted your assessments considerably. Another thing that I wanted to note about the assessments is that the number that you're seeing here, whoops. This does include a reduction to the paraprofessional assessment. So through our discussions at the last meeting, there were four new para positions being requested, but we've kept only one. So essentially, what would happen is we would need to go back to the SVSU board and have them agree to the reduction of those three para positions, which is about $96,000 reduction in that budget.
I mean, the decision we had to make today was to put, show the reduction in the budget to try and cut down on how many meetings we need to go through. So we didn't put the reduction in until the SU meets to do the reduction, then we'd have to come back to you. So I can't see where the SU board will not agree with the reduction, so we made the decision to go ahead and show you the reduction and what your number. Now, if the SU doesn't vote the reduction, again, I can't imagine they won't, then we would have to come back to this board, and you'd have a different number, but...
They'll vote.
I believe they will. We'll check with the chair for the SU.
And then another thing to, to note about the assessments is, I know that because of the publicity that the SVSU budget received and that it's a nearly 9% increase for FY21, the entirety of that budget is actually built into the local budgets. So when people are voting on the SVU ESD budget, the North Bennington budget, and the Mount Anthony budget, they are essentially voting for the SVSU budget because it's all built in here. Now, you may look at that and say, well, wait a second, that's only going up 1.5%, 2%. And I can tell you that the assessment in Mount Anthony is up less than 2% as well. And that's because we take the offsetting revenue off of that expenditure budget and any fund balances, so that, what you're seeing there is the net effect of that. So while, yes, overall, almost a 9% increase, it's rather minimal to, to these budgets here. So are there questions there before I move on?
Do you know just offhand what the balance is in the reserve fund right now?
I do have reserve fund balances that I will give you. Yep.
I was, I stay up at night worrying about things like 15% increase in phone calls haven't been nice, and one of the things I was going to suggest is, as minimal an effect as it has, board members get a stipend. I don't know why in bad budget years we have to do that. We're making .03 cents an hour for the work we do anyway. I don't know if that makes any sense to board members to put it out there as a good faith gesture. That's about all it is, but...
It would have...
Minimal.
Probably wouldn't even move...
I got that, but at least it's when you're trying to explain a budget.
Sure.
So let's, let's, in case anybody's listening, the stipend is really small that you do receive.
$100 a month.
Yeah.
Which is paid annually, so $1,200.
I don't want anyone to get the idea that you're overcompensated. In fact, it's pretty minimal, so. I think it's, it's a gesture, and I don't mean to speak for what the board wants to do, but you also do put a lot of time into that stipend.
I mean, I, just, just to comment on that, Dick, wouldn't that have to be decided by a vote at town meeting anyway? I think that...
It is voted on on set before.
There would need to be an article built in to...
You do have board members that have given back their stipend. There are some that don't accept it, but that's an individual decision, not gone.
It's even hard not to accept it. I think I called when I got this check in the mail and didn't know who I was getting it from because it's a new district and thought maybe you'd made a mistake. I know that never happens.
Yeah, no. But you're right, because, you know, it is in the budget. It's, it's kind of an automatic thing to you, so. Actually, I don't, when I say people don't accept it, I've, we've had board members turn around and donate it back as opposed to not accept it.
I just have, I have a question about, and I'm sure it's being done, and how it's being, I guess on how it's being done. Obviously, the principals like Jeff and all the other principals came to us with all these requests, and we wrote it out here saying basically, too bad on those requests this year because of, you know, what we're working with. How are we communicating to the principals that, you know?
I contacted each, I contacted each principal individually. I went to them or called them. I called Jeff and didn't make it up to Shasberry and let them all know after your meeting so that they heard it directly from me and didn't pick it up in the newspapers.
All right, great. I, I figured that. I just wanted to know.
And I did express how the board was reluctant to do that. I mean, I, I thought your reaction at that budget meeting was wonderful to see from board members who are very supportive of their schools, but realize because of, I mean, we should probably repeat that as there are people maybe listening today who weren't listening at that meeting, the impact of, you know, the CLA going down in all the communities, the increase in health insurance, the impact of what happened in statewide negotiations, arbitration for health insurance that now we have to offer for all employees, and a lower student count. It's been the perfect storm to impact our budget this year that makes it a very difficult year to add anything. So it certainly was, I, I don't think I heard any board member say they didn't support what the principals were asking for.
Right, yeah, okay.
And at some point, we, we're going to have to pay for this.
Right. Yeah, and I shouldn't just say the principal, what the principal asked for, what the director of facility are asking for, and the, the very difficult decision to not put anything into contributions into the reserve fund, which, you know, is a risk that could come back to bite us at some point, but it, you know, if these cuts don't go through, then we could be looking at reducing staff, and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Please, no, go ahead, Dick. Any potential grants on the horizon that we might be looking at in some of the new areas, the 611 program and some of those other things that, I mean...
The only immediate one that I know that we're looking at is the emergency 911 equipment grant, so we do have matching funds in here for that, but it's, I think, just about $5,000 that we added in. So we become compliant, and we're going to be working towards compliance. It's not just going to be the flip of a switch in how we add this equipment. It's a lot of back and forth with our service providers and those equipment carriers coming in and making sure that the programming's there, and then we do a lot of testing back and forth with 911. Do test calls.
Some scheduled calls going on, huh?
To make sure that what they're seeing on their end meets the requirements of the new rules regarding emergency 911 calls. So the next page in your packet is, again, just the expenditures, but just broken down by function or category. Again, all the bullets from the first page still apply, but this is just breaking things down instead of looking at them by overall salaries and overall budgets. You're seeing things by, you know, direct instruction, which would be classroom instruction, art, PE, math, so on and so forth.
Renee, you want to explain, explain the obvious question on line 2112?
Uh, yes.
That's where my pen is.
Yes, so on, when we had added the social worker last, last year for the 611 classroom, we built that in guidance, so in the 2120 line. So you can see there's a pretty significant reduction there. With the new software that we implemented this year and the new chart of accounts that the state asked us to implement, this is basically just a correction. So we're moving that social worker from, which was in 2120 and sliding that up to 2112. The other, the other reduction that you're seeing there is due to a position that had been budgeted but has, had remained vacant, so we've pulled that out. But again, these are all things that we have identified on the budget category, but again, it's just breaking it out into, into a different way, so you can see the impact.
Can help explain, like, how can you have a 1.3% increase when you know that, you know, health insurance and even, you know, whatever is going to be the negotiated raise that the teaching staff and support staff are going to get? It's because of those positions that were in the budget at various schools but were never filled, so again, that's a cut that isn't resulting in a layoff. So it's not just the, the positions that are listed on the front that have been cut that principals asked for. There's at least two positions there, yeah, because we just found the last one, that were not filled, so they're sitting there empty but on a line item, so we cut those.
So that's over, you know, probably close to $240,000 just in vacant positions that have been in the budgets and the positions haven't been filled.
How long were they not filled for?
At least two years and more.
There's one position that was probably never filled.
Has been vacant for, right, four or five years.
Okay.
611 program is only at Molly?
Uh, and Benell.
And Benell, yeah.
It is serving all of our students, so, so one of the things that...
Any student is eligible to go. We have an entry, an entrance requirement. We have a team that studies the packet that comes in. Actually, I went to one of those meetings on Friday at Bennington Elementary, but any elementary student can, could be placed in that program if they need it.
And that's one of the, the things that we actually included in this budget is transportation. So adding a bus, unfortunately, we, we have no idea of knowing next year who might be using the program, so we need to be able to provide transportation if they're in, you know, the outlying schools, but depending upon space, those programs could essentially move into any other building, too, that had space for them. So I think it was, basically ended up being Bennington Elementary and Molly Stark just because of space availability this year. But they definitely are district-wide.
The program could end up housed in Shasberry at some point, whoever had the empty classroom, so.
That's behavior. So that's, I'm just thinking of Molly.
So then the next page. In your packet is estimated revenue. We'll just highlight some of the changes here. We have currently 13 students tuitioning into various schools, Shasberry, Molly Stark, and Woodford. Couple of those are fifth and sixth grade, so depending upon what those students do, I have reduced, well, actually, it's an increase, but reduced our student, potential student count to 11 coming in, returning next year, tuitioning into us at a rate of $13,000 each. So that's the increase that you're seeing there on the first line of additional $47,000 in revenue. The reduction of $32,000, so the third line down, if you recall, last year, particularly here in Shasberry, when we were talking about adding a clinician, the initial thought was that the clinician would be here for three days a week, and then special education could use that person for two days a week. Once all was said and done, the person's actually here full-time, so we're not splitting that position with special education, so none of that salary and benefits would be reimbursed. So that's the reduction that you're seeing there. Traveling down to fund balance, this is a good thing. You know, our auditors are telling us time and time again, we need to start working our fund balances down, so we have done that, but unfortunately, that actually reduces our offsetting revenue, so that's going to drive up our tax rates. The next line down that I have in bold, it's noted here as the general state support grant. This is also, when we look at the next page, is what we're going to see as education spending. So this line is essentially what we are asking for from the state education fund. So any other revenues that we have offset the demand that we place on the education fund. Just a couple of minor adjustments to small schools grant. I have a question in to the AOE, assuming that that's going to continue, but hopefully we will know for sure once we get an answer there, assuming it continues. We have been getting about $39,000, so that's what I have in the budget for next year. Food service equipment, we know that the needs for next year have resulted in a reduction to the budget, so therefore, it's a reduction in offsetting revenue from our food service fund, so that's corresponding there. And then just a minor adjustment to our forest revenue based on what we've received in past years. So all in all, again, it's a 1.33% increase. However, when we look at that general state support grant number, it's nearly a 7% increase. So if we then flip to the next page. The first thing that I want to point out is, at the, the very top, is our equalized pupil numbers, and these have changed slightly from the last document that I gave you. Here somewhere. I had a document that we put together with uncontrollable factors that we're facing and had identified each of the township's elementary portion of equalized pupils. It's changed ever so slightly, but we'll take whatever changes in the upward tick we'll get. So it, it has gone up just slightly. So with that noted, we can scroll down and start looking at the homestead tax rate calculations. And the MAU data that we have here is essentially what we had presented to the MAU board at their meeting last week, which was draft two with some cuts that we had proposed. So they have not set their budget yet. They're meeting again tomorrow, so that number still could change somewhat, but it isn't updated based on the meeting last week. So as I said before, what we saw on the previous page, our general state support grant, our demand on the education fund, is this line three, dear education spending, which is essentially taking our budgeted expenditures from pages one and two of your handout and reducing it by all of that local revenue, so by our impact aid, our forest revenue, our incoming tuition, which results in the, again, amount of money that we're asking for from the state education fund. Our equalized pupils, we take that number and divide our education spending to then determine how much we're spending essentially per equalized pupil. And then we come to that homestead property yield recommendation. So this is a figure that has been distributed from the tax commissioner, came out in early December, and this is based on their calculations, what they think that the state education fund would be able to support. Education spending per equalized pupil at $10,883 would result in a... Education spending per equalized pupil at $10,883 would result in a tax rate of $1. So if that's how much we were spending, our tax rate would be $1. But if you see here, we're spending 22 million divided by the roughly 1,300 equalized pupils that comes to an education spending for equalized people of over $16,000. So this looks much better than we saw last time around when we were actually over that excess spending threshold, right? So now we're down below that, but we're still over that property yield, so we have to do that division there, which creates the adjustment to give us our base tax rate. So across all of our towns, the base tax rate is based on the information you have in front of you in this draft three, $1.5115. From there, we apply our percentages of equalized pupils from those that are in the elementary district and those that are at the secondary level. So up at the top of your sheet, when you see the equalized pupils broken down by elementary and by secondary, there are also corresponding percentages. So in Bennington, we just take it here, just because Bennington comes first economically, 43.67% of the student body or of our equalized pupils are at the elementary level, and the remaining 56.33% are at the secondary level. So we take those percentages for each town, and we take the tax rate for Mount Anthony, the tax rate for the SVU ESD, and we use the percentage of equalized pupils to prorate the tax rates. And we come with a blunt, we come down to a blended tax rate across the board here, so roughly 1.45, 1.46 between Bennington, Pownell, Shafter, and Woodford. After that, the CLA is applied, and as Jim mentioned earlier, and we have seen in previous meetings, the CLA has decreased in every town. So this is another factor that we do not have control over, but it is a factor that is contributing to the increase in our projected tax rates. So what that CLA means is if you're under 100%, essentially that town's properties are determined to be undervalued. So if we were exactly 100%, that would be basically market rate. But Bennington is 93.62, so they're saying that the properties, the grand list, is undervalued by six some odd percent. So we actually have to make up that difference because the property values when we apply the tax rate is not going to generate enough income. Conversely, when we look at the municipalities that have CLAs over 100%, those are valued higher than what market rate would be. So if you notice, we have, you know, 1.45, 1.46 across, so it's line 10C, the anticipated equalized homestead tax rate. When you apply the CLA in Bennington, notice how it increases to 1.5554. But in all the other instances, because the CLA is above 100%, the tax rate actually comes down because the home values are higher than what market rate is in those towns. So line 12 gives you what our estimated tax rate is. Again, this is just an estimate at this point. We don't know what the property yield is going to be, so that figure that's highlighted above in yellow, that $10,883 that the tax commissioner gave us in December, they did mention that that number came out before the arbitrator's decision did. So that number very well could change. And this is something that the legislature votes on in the spring after all budgets have been collected and they actually know what the education fund can support. So even though we're looking at a 1.33% increase to the budget, range in tax rate increases could be anywhere from seven to 12 cents. Now again, I know this is somewhat alarming, so the last page of your packet, it is an update. So this is the three-year comparison of our education property taxes. And this is, this is all posted online too, so those folks at home, they want to take a look at it. It is there for them to see. But essentially, we read from right to left. So our homestead tax rates for FY18 compared those to what the homestead tax rates were in FY19. So down through, you can see it's a decrease, I believe, in every town except Woodford. And then we go on to what the taxes were for this year. A slight increase in Bennington of a penny, decreases in North Bennington, decrease in Pownell, decrease, a small increase in Shafter, two cents. Shafter ID went down and Woodford up two cents. So this is just a little bit different from the version I showed you earlier because I added the column here to show you the net change. And in every instance, every town's education taxes have gone down over the past two years, net. So up one year, down another year, but if we net that effect over the course of the three years, it has been a decrease except in Woodford. So just to put things in perspective a little bit with the increases that we're looking at, again, there's a number of factors that we just don't have control over. The health insurance, our CLAs have gone down, our equalized pupils have gone down, our fund balances have gone down. That's actually a good thing, our fund balances are, we're working them down, but it's just working against us this year. So that is what I have for you for budget. I do have fund balances I will share, not fund balances, I'm sorry, reserve fund balances. But before I do that, I just wanted to open it up for any questions.
Thank you for doing all the work you did on this because it looks much better today than it did the other day.
You guys did the hard work in making the decisions.
And we found the calculation change in special education, which was a significant reduction to, which if we had found it earlier, might have been less of a shock to you last year.
Any questions for Director Gordon? All right.
So just reserve accounts. The Bennington reserve account, I'm not going to give you exact figures, but it's a little over $157,000. And I believe Jerry is looking to do another roof this year, so...
I already had to head to Matt looking up there today because he was too...
Did you get an estimate for that yet, Jerry?
It's a tough one.
No, but did you get an estimate for...
It's going to be about, I mean, I'm guessing around 125, 130 grand.
I mean, we will put it out to bid, so hopefully it comes in under that 157 number, so we'll have funding there to pay for it. Pownell's reserve account is at just over $332,000. And if you recall, a year, maybe two years ago now, a ballot article was put before the voters asking them if they would approve moving funds that had been set aside for the bus sinking fund, move that to capital, capital reserve, and that did pass. So the bus sinking fund money was moved into that reserve account. Shafter currently has about $315,000, but we have the, the work that's been done on the ventilation project, that was, a bulk of it done this summer, that still needs to be reduced from that reserve account. That's about $167,000, so that would be coming out of that account. And then Woodford is at about $119,000 in their reserve account.
Which has to stay with each district anyway.
Correct. So each of those funds will remain with those buildings and/or the Bennington schools for the BSD, for the BSD fund. Going forward, contributions are going to be made into a new kind of general fund, which then would be allocated however the board chooses.
The general fund that we're not going to make a payment to this year.
We have it budgeted this year, but not next year. So we do have 130, that'll be starting up the new fund, 130,000.
But will all the, say, we have, when we switch to that general account, basically for all, all the monies that we have in these schools, if there's anything left, will go into that general fund?
No, this money is going to stay.
Stay with your school until it's spent down.
I got you, okay.
But no access to the communal reserve fund until your school's balance is spent down?
That'll be up to the board.
Okay. Yeah, I think that would make sense, yeah.
So I guess the only thing that makes me nervous is if Bennington's at 157 and we're potentially going to be spending 130,000 on a roof.
Then you would tap into the new general fund because you've exhausted all of your funds.
Or if there are smaller projects, you know, that we can include in the expenditure budget, we can do that, but...
Yeah, we'd only tap the reserve if every other line item had been drained down.
Okay. So I guess at this point, if the board feels comfortable, they can take a vote on this budget, or if there's changes, further changes that you would like, and just need to know what you'd like to do going forward.
I think it's gone a long way. I think we need to get on it and get it out there.
I don't think we have, I don't think we have any other changes we can do.
Well, and that's the question.
You'd be looking at cutting personnel at that point.
No, we're not doing that, no. So that's my motion, no.
So Dick has made the motion to approve version three of the draft that's proposed by Director Gordon. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Angie. So Dick is first, Angie's second. Any further discussion on this? Other than just to reiterate what Tony said, thank you very much, Renee, and thank you to the building principals, and thank you to all the staff who made, who put that input into that as well. So all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I suggest one item related to budget?
Please.
As we go forward beyond this budget year, somehow we have to consider what to do with mechanical issues and something in the form of a sinking fund, we need to get on the same page and consider how to construct that somehow. Your reserve funds are directed toward individual schools at the moment, and we're always going to short maintenance, that seems to be the historical whipping boy, and...
Yeah, and that, and that $130,000 payment that you're not going to make next year works next year because you still, except for Bennington, have some sizable reserve funds. But missing that year is, I could anticipate where you may have to do an accelerated payment in a future year because $130,000 going into a reserve fund every year, and the individual reserve funds then are drawn down, I'd be very nervous that that is on enough of a payment for all six elementary schools.
Right, I hear what you're saying. We're not saving enough. We're not setting aside enough, yeah.
Correct.
We've got a huge history now. We've got to get Jerry a truck.
Can I just throw out a suggestion? Last year, the Mount Anthony Board asked the voters going forward if there was a fund balance, a sufficient fund balance, if the voters would allow the board to choose to reduce that fund balance by an amount of their choosing to set aside in a reserve fund. The voters passed that, so last year, the fund balance was still quite large, so we took $150,000 out of that fund balance and set that aside. So that's something that this board could consider.
The balance with the, what you have to balance with is then you will lose fund balance in the following year to reduce any tax increase. But, but that's a decision the board can make if, if that vote happens. You, they could be sitting here looking at fund balances once we get it back from the cabinet, won't we do? And, and the board can make that decision if the voters authorize you to do it.
So last year, Mount Anthony did decide to pull 150 out. This year, the fund balance has been reduced in and of itself just through spending that they decided not to do that. So it's just some flexibility that the board has from year to year.
So would that require an article to be on the town meeting ballot to allow us to do it? So with that in mind, I would entertain a motion to include such an article on the 2021 town meeting ballot. Okay, so well, we need a, we need a motion, yeah. Great, so Jayla and Tony, great. So the motion on the floor would ask the voters to empower us to do exactly what you're describing, to have board flexibility over fund balances and how do we, how we can then, if possibly divert them to the reserve fund so we're saving more in case of that on any day.
Right, and that reserve fund that we have set aside was not allocated to anything specific, so it could be used for capital improvements, it could be used for tax stabilization. So if we word it the same way, that'll give you the same flexibility.
So we just build in that flexibility, great. So any further discussion for the motion on the floor? Okay, so hearing that, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Very good.
So we're going to have three questions for the voters. We're going to have our budget, we're going to have the election of offices, and we're going to have the flexibility.
Yep, okay. The next item on the agenda, realizing when we modified our agenda at the outset, we did not allow time for superintendent's report, but the chair is willing to cede his time to the superintendent.
The superintendent didn't have a report because we, I didn't anticipate it because I wanted to give all the time to the budget.
Very good.
I will tell you that for the next meeting, I hope to have next year's schedule, too. We presented the schedule to the principals this morning and to the directors this morning, the draft of what our 2020, 2021 school year calendar. I will tell you that Labor Day is very late, it's just, so we will be, the plan is still to come back in school like we come back to school in August like we do, but there'll be almost two weeks of school before Labor Day.
Wow.
And depending on what happens in negotiations, you know, we may have to modify the calendar. The one item in negotiations is to reduce the amount of student days to the state requirement, which is 175, and increase the professional learning days to five full professional learning days that are dispersed throughout the calendar so that we are pulling teachers out of class less time for professional learning and without having the impact from not being able to find subs for them. I don't know where that's going to go in negotiations, but...
All right, I guess I would add just as a final bit for the chair report, now that budget season is sort of wrapping up, we'll be able to put more effort into the, the sort of future planning work group that we had talked about last month. So we, a few different people from this board have said that they would like to be a part of that, and so we need to whittle that down so that we don't break quorum rules. But again, now that we're moving out of, out of budget, we can start focusing our attention there. So the last item on the agenda is just informational purposes, there's the SVSU student enrollment that was posted, as well as the budget status report that was posted. So we've exhausted our agenda, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Oh, I take it back. Hang on, before we do that, typically, we don't meet in February because we're giving our central office staff and our building principals sort of a break from all the work that went into budget season. So unless there are no objections to that, our, the next meeting of this board will be the second Tuesday in March.
But isn't that...
We have an annual meeting.
Isn't that...
That means it's first.
It'll be a reorganization meeting next time in March.
Right, reorganization, okay. So it'll be after the vote?
Yeah.
Right, so the, so the vote is the third of March, the next time that we would be due to meet if we take February off is March 10th.
Okay.
And there's always the possibility we might need a special meeting, but I would think maybe we might use February to put this smaller group of committees together, start talking about some of those items, yeah.
So that makes our next meeting on March 10th, it'll be a reorganizational meeting, and we're due to meet at... and we're due to meet at Woodford, we've not yet visited Woodford, so it would be building tour at 6:00, and then a meeting starting at 6:30.
No.
No?
No.
They said in our principal's report that you only need like five or 10 minutes for the-
For the tour.
For the tour.
Okay. The building tour at 6:15, and the meeting at 6:30 then.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask one question before you? I don't know if the board wants to reconvene again to authorize signing of the warning, or if they want to take that action based on-
Have the action tonight, giving the authority to the-
Everybody to come in and sign at your leisure.
Okay, so I believe Robert's rule says we can suspend action on a pending motion to entertain a different motion that takes point of priority. So we'll call this a point of priority. All right. And since it's part of my point of priority, I would entertain a motion to authorize the chair to sign to-
Everybody.
Everybody's going to come in, but it's going to be, they're going to come into central office instead.
Instead of coming in board, yes, that's the motion, that I would love to hear from somebody.
So move.
Thank you, Dick. All right, we'll call that, Angie. Any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that passes.
I just have one last thing on this, on the alternative energy. I work with a fellow at Habitat, Jim Hand, some of you may know him, he used to have Hand Motors in Manchester. Him and his son have a huge solar, and I just, I'd like to review this with him, if anybody has, if the board's okay with that, just because I'm not totally up to speed on the solar. You know, solar project, he is, and I know he would look at this and say, that's a good deal, or maybe you want to be a little careful.
This is what we got hung up on last time with Bennington, like, because you're locking up your meters, you know, once you give that meter to somebody, if a better deal comes along, and maybe a better deal isn't going to come along, but once you do it, you do it.
Well, and I think any sort of independent research that members of this board do, I think that's great.
Okay.
Yeah, we're only serving to make a more informed choice, that way.
And I think the board had decided at that point that it would have been a possible course of action going forward, to put an RFP out, to kind of open it up to all of the solar companies that might be interested, so.
And you know, one, one difference between this proposal and the proposal that came before the BSD is that there's not the time crunch with this one, the, the one, when, when we had a body come before the BSD, they wanted an answer right then and there. And this is, we're not hearing that, which, which already lends a feeling of ease to this, yeah.
And it's like, if it's not this project, they'll have another one, like, we don't make the deadline for their St. Albans, they have other options.
Yep.
That was a positive.
So great, so returning to the motion that we have on the floor to adjourn, any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.